I call to order December 20th, 2022. Board meetings open. Please silence your cell phones if you have your cell phones with you today. Our invocation is by Commissioner Joe Daughtry. Pledge allegiance is by Commissioner Freeman Hardison.
All right. If everybody bowed their heads. Dear Lord, we thank you today. We thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon each of us. Lord, we thank you for our salvation. Today, Lord, we ask for your guidance as we tackle some very important issues that face Wayne County. Lord, we seek and lean upon your guiding hand. Bless each family as we prepare to celebrate the birth of Jesus. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December the 6th? I have a motion on the floor. Please raise your right hand if you approve. Motion carried, Mr. All right. Mr. Crumpler?
I have one adjustment for the agenda. It would be remove the 9:30 a.m. public hearing, which was a public hearing to receive public comments on proposed economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance Incorporated to construct two show buildings at Park East Industrial Park. Would need to remove that, please. That's it.
Do we need a motion to do that?
So move.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I raise your right hand if you approved? Motion carried, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to special presentations. Item number one is a presentation by Board of Elections Director Annie Risky.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
Good. So I guess I was invited here at the last meeting, so here I am. I have a little bit of an update for Mr. Williams and the rest of the board, as he requested, and then an explanation for a budget amendment. That was the content of your discussion two weeks ago. I'll start with the election update. The November 8th general election went incredibly well. We had 35,459 voters, and that's about 47% of our electorate. Early voting continues to be our most popular method, with 21,416 voters spread between three sites. Election day in-pursing voting resulted in 12,884 voters between all 28 precincts. 1,073 voters cast their ballots by mail and 86 cast provisional ballots. Two ballots were administratively challenged due to those voters having voted by mail and then passing away prior to election day. There were no discrepancies between voter history and ballots cast, which is wonderful. Post-election audits conducted by the BOE, by us, and the State Board verified these results. Logic and accuracy testing of our voting equipment was done prior to the election, as always. We're happy last year to, in November, to offer the new Express Votes, the ADA Assistive Ballot Marking Devices that we all purchased last year with the CIPU funds. The precinct officials and the voters were all very appreciative of the new technology, and we have plans for the future to introduce the technology to different groups prior to the next election. This was also the first election that we coded ballots by precincts rather than by style. A lot of people don't really know what that is. It makes a difference administratively because we are going to be able to more concisely order ballot quantity, our ballot stock, and it certainly saves us in human resources as now our 30-day precinct sort is an automatic process rather than a very cumbersome post-election audit task. Our biggest challenges leading up to this election were misinformation and security. We spent a lot of our time correcting misinformation and encouraging our voters to get their information from election officials, from us. We had a few issues with our politically-appointed election observers. Three observers were removed for infractions, including two instances of voter interference. These two reports were turned over to the State Board, with one being referred to the Department of Justice's Civil Rights Division. As far as security, we took a very serious approach to this. We requested keep checks from the Goldsboro Police Department and the Wayne County Sheriff's Office for all of our early voting sites and our election day precincts. Here at the BOE, Sheriff Pierce provided us with a deputy for all of our open meetings. This allowed us to focus on our election tasks rather than our own safety and security, which was a major concern for us. Ultimately, however, we did end up with two specific threats that we turned over to the State Board of Elections. These resulted in referrals again to the Department of Justice and the FBI. I don't have any current knowledge on the status of these investigations. We can probably all agree that this election was very different from those of the past. We're seeing an increasing political divide within our country, and this is having a direct effect on local, state, and national election officials, on retention, recruitment, our ability to staff our early voting sites and our election day precincts. From threats to the numerous negative interactions that we had, to the attempts to overwhelm us with public records requests as a denial-of-service tactic, it was certainly a different landscape this past election. But at the end of the day, we persevered. We had an election with 47% turnout and absolutely perfect reconciliation, so I'm incredibly proud of the work of my staff, my precinct officials, temporary staff, and board members. Looking forward to next year's budget, fair warning, we have at least two elections next fiscal year, possibly four. So I gave you a warning for my budget for next year. A little bit about the budget amendment.
Excuse me. Could I interrupt you?
Sure.
Could you give some explanation in regards to those elections of next year?
We have a, for next, for the next fiscal year, we have a possible city of Goldsboro primary election in October, and then we have municipal and sanitary district elections in November. And then we have the presidential preference primary in March and a possible runoff in either April or May, depending if it's required for a federal or a non-federal office. So possibility of four.
Okay.
You're welcome. On September 15th, I sent a budget amendments, a budget amendment to finance for $8,073 to be placed on the Board of Commissioners' meeting agenda. When I received the agenda for October 4th, I realized my budget amendment wasn't included, so I reached out and asked the county manager. He responded with an email that "any pay raises must be budgeted for and considered during the budgeting process." I asked for clarification that the budget amendment had ever made it onto the agenda, and I requested a copy of the disapproved budget amendment back. I could see via email traffic that my request had been forwarded to Finance, and they then sent me back the disapproved budget amendment. I never received clarification as to whether or not it had ever made it to your agenda. I was simply trying to determine if my budget amendment had ever made it to the agenda. I provided all of this email traffic to my board at their next meeting, along with the disapproved budget amendment. A little bit of background for my budget amendment. The idea for a pay adjustment for the Board of Elections members came solely from me. Once last year's budget was passed, many staff members across the county received pay increases or adjustments, with the lowest wage in the county being paid becoming $15 per hour. In my own opinion, this adjustment process was not the most transparent, and I was unaware of it until after the Board of Elections' budget was already prepared to submit it. Nevertheless, I determined that we needed to raise our early voting site staff pay to $15 an hour as well. I had been gradually increasing their pay over the past few years, but I decided that within my budget, I could raise them to $15 per hour with a few adjustments. This wasn't a requirement, and I know that all county positions are important, but I couldn't fathom paying frontline election officials any less than the lowest-paid county worker. That being done, I also started to look at the board member pay. Their flat rate of $2.50 per month had remained the same since 2016. Have I reached my time? I polled some nearby similarly-sized counties and determined that a $1.50 a month adjustment would be workable within our budget because we had budgeted previously in repairs and maintenance of equipment for auto-mark repairs. But remember, we replaced them with Express Votes, which came with a warranty. My intent was to request to move the $8,073 over from there to adjust the board member pay for the remainder of the fiscal year. Then at the BOE September 13th meeting, I presented all of this to our board, and they voted unanimously to approve. That's when I prepared and sent the budget amendment. That's all. I never requested to be on the agenda. I just wanted my budget amendment on the agenda. Any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions?
No, but we make a comment. We appreciate what you and your staff has, are doing and have done in the past. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So you were told that you couldn't do the budget amendment because it wasn't during budget time, correct?
Correct.
And from county, from our county manager, why is that?
Typically, any pay raise would be, had to be planned for and budgeted for in the budget cycle. That's for every department across the board.
But we've never, on any other occasion?
Not to my knowledge, not to a department that hasn't pre-planned and pre-budgeted for money. If you move money from one line item to another, then from here on out, you're always got a payroll expense that increases, and then her other line item is depleted for maintenance.
Say that again, ma'am.
So if you move money from a maintenance line item to up the salaries, you've got, next year, you'd have that same salary increase in the next year's budget, and then she would probably come back and ask for maintenance again, so you're just increasing the budget, departmental budget. So usually, employee salaries are budgeted for during the budget process.
But what I'm saying is, that's just, regardless, no matter what, that's going to happen regardless for anybody that, that increases salaries.
Should have submitted it during the budget process, yes.
What I'm saying is, whether you submit it during the budget process or you don't, that same process is going to happen for any department, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So was, I don't understand the issue, if the money is there and it's available, you know what I mean? And even, to not even to be discussed? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's just, it just doesn't, it seems a little weird to me, you know what I mean? So, and I mean, which is, which is fine, but I'm just saying, at the end of the day, it's like we're making an excuse for something that's a natural process regardless, no matter when you do it, you know what I'm saying? So even if you, you hire someone and their salary, you bring them in more than what the salary was of the previous person because of their experience or whatever that may be, you make that adjustment during that time, correct?
It depends. I mean, it depends on, one, if you're talking about a particular person versus an entire group of people. So we have to factor that into consideration when you're talking about the budget, because even though, even though the money might be available, we still have to consider the fact that it's increasing their budget for the next year.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, even if you hire that person, that one person's salary could be more than that entire, that salary increase could be more than that entire board is getting, because it's not that, not a big significant amount of money. So either way, it would still be the same exact process regardless, no matter what time it is during the year, no matter what, you still would have to do the same thing either way. It's not, it's not like you're saving anything or you're doing anything different. It's the same exact process regardless, whether it's during budget time or whether it's not. Because even during budget time, you're still going to make that adjustment for maintenance. Whether it's during the middle of the year, you're still going to make that adjustment for maintenance come budget time. So it, it just doesn't matter. So it's just, it's just an excuse. To me, that's not a valid excuse.
Well, and it's ultimately up to the board. I mean, the, the staff, you know, the staff makes recommendations, and then we present that to the board, so that's, that's ultimately not our decision.
I mean, I understand, but that didn't come to, to the full board, and that's something else that I have a problem with. It's a lot of things that happen around here that are not coming to the full board for discussion. And then we get, we're the ones that get the phone calls and get the blame. I just recently got, I don't know how many phone calls from our last meeting to this meeting about issues that happened during the meeting. It's like, okay, I didn't know myself, because it's a lot of information I don't get, but this process, it's like, you know, we are making excuses for things, and it's just, it's simple. So I mean, like I said, I mean, at the end of the day, if, if we have a board that voted unanimous on raising their salary, they bring it to us. It's not affecting us at all. It's not going to change anything. It's not making no big difference, nothing but a budget amendment.
But it is affecting us. It's affecting our budget. It increases the money we have to pay to that department, and they do not authorize their budget.
But what I'm saying is, that won't happen, that you're, we're not putting any more money in at this moment if they raise their salaries.
But you're obligating yourself for next year's budget to put more money in when you don't know what your budget needs are for next year. And yes, you can do that, but it's a board decision. That's not staff decision.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, you have to be competitive. You're supposed to pay fair wages, you know what I mean? Yeah, we'll make that adjustment. What you said was how much for the year?
$8,000.
$8,000. I mean, if we're, if we're in that dive of strayed that $8,000 is going to affect our budget that much next year, as a county, we have a problem, and a big problem. I just don't like the fact that it didn't come to this board, the way that it was handled, and excuse that was made at the end of the day. And a lot of that stuff has happened, a lot.
Well, staff followed exactly.
And I'm not blaming it, no. And I'm not, I'm not blaming it on, on you or Finance.
It feels like it.
I'm sorry. You know what I mean? I'm sorry. Didn't mean it that way. I'm just saying, whoever told her that, and if it was you, Chip, it was you. If it was our former chairman that told her that, then it was the chairman. I don't know who worked that out. I wasn't a part of that deal. That's the thing that I have a problem with. That has happened several times, especially over the, last year.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the reason we have pre-agenda meetings, only three can attend. I happen to be at the meeting. Now, I just want you to understand, we do not have a problem with giving an increase. But I've been on the board going on 10 years, and we've never given a pay increase to a department during the middle of the year. And another concern of mine is, if we do it for one department, how many more departments are going to come to us and want to do the very same thing? But no one is against giving the Board of Elections the pay increase, but it's always been done at budget time.
Right. And had I known that these pay increases were going to happen last year, I would have put it in my budget for last year. But again, I didn't know.
You know, no blame pointed at anybody, because I haven't heard nobody on this board say anything negative about giving the pay increase.
No, the pay increases were discussed at the budget orientation meeting, which would have been in early February before the budget process began. So it was discussed.
The $15 per hour.
Not specifically, but the pay adjustments, the market studies that HR was doing, that was discussed during the budget orientation meeting.
For all departments.
Yeah, I don't know if we laid out all, but we said countywide, if I remember correctly. I'm going back on memory here.
I have the emails about that budget study.
Yeah, this, and this was a meeting across all departments, so it was announced.
Right. Yeah.
We've got it split up into three different groups now, right? Far as the pay study, every, every three years, and I don't, where the Board of Elections lies in that, which group they lie in.
Madam Chair. Okay. Even, I was, the budget study was something that I looked into myself, and it was a lot of questions with that, because what, what was that? The actual study seemed a little off, just to be honest. Now, going back to this pre-agenda meeting with three members, I don't even see, I don't even find minutes of those meetings. I don't even know what's going on at those meetings as a board member, which seems quite ridiculous. So we can't even use that as an excuse. I don't even know when that started. I don't know when it was voted on to do that. I don't know any of that stuff. I don't even see it in our policies and procedures, anything. I know that it's legally, you can't do it, but I don't see it anywhere. Maybe staff attorney has, knows exactly where it is, but when I asked for those records and I looked for it, I couldn't find it myself. So it's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts going on with this board that are, to me, not right. And I've been dealing with that myself, with issues that I had to try to get on, put on the agenda through that board, which seemed unfair. I've actually even sat on the board one time with the chairman, and the chairman told me he had the power to even take something off, which legally he didn't, and I have that in writing from the school of government. These things that are happening just don't seem right, and we say, well, we haven't done this, we haven't done that. That's fine that we haven't done it. That don't mean that we shouldn't do it now. I get tired of all this stuff that you talk about from the past, all these years. If those things were done correctly and done so great, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in right now as a county. So it's time for we to start making some changes. It was a simple thing. You're talking about $8,000. We do budget amendments every meeting, and it's way more than $8,000 on several occasions. 90% of the time, it's probably more than $8,000. And we're having a problem with this? I mean, it was just an excuse. And I mean, it's like, let's just be honest about it. And I mean, it's fine at the end of the day, what we do and what we don't do, it's a board's decision, but I didn't like it. I don't like it. I don't like the way that pre-agenda meeting is set up. That needs to be looked into also. But thank you.
One thing I'd like to add to this, the $15, when I was looking at it and, and making sure everybody in the budget had the $15 an hour, it was for full and, and part-time, regular part-time employees, so that, the temporary help officials wouldn't have been looked at from our point of view.
Yeah, but I have like 300 of them. So maybe in the future, if you, you know, if other people employ temporary help, that might be something that we would want to know when we're budgeting for our temporary help, you know? Because I appreciate all the work that every county employee does, but I can't in good conscience send my election officials to the front lines for $12 an hour while, you know, everyone in the county is making at least $15 an hour to do the most basic of jobs. That's all I was going to.
Full-time and regular part-time employees. And the $15 was talked about at all of our budget work sessions, even with the commissioners, you know, that were held online and all.
Yeah, and I was conducting a primary election during budget time. I think sometimes we forget that department managers have a full-time job aside from the county business. I know budget is important, and I put my best effort into it for the past two years, but my primary duty is to conduct elections, and during that time, I was conducting a general election.
And you do, you have always done a great job with your budget. I'm just trying to tell you that while we, it wouldn't have caught our eye is because it wasn't a, a payroll, you know, position.
Yeah, well, I mean, going forward, I'll definitely make those adjustments in my budget for 2023, you know?
That's one we need to discuss today, and that's at the budget meeting in February, and let's, you know, bring that forward and have a discussion then.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I think one thing, that one of the biggest things that we've learned from this is communication.
Definitely.
I mean, you know, this is not the first time we've had a breakdown in communications.
Definitely.
And, you know, we can't point fingers at anybody. It's just, you know, the county government is big business, bigger than a lot of people realize, and sometimes, not only in this case, but in other cases, the breakdown in communication is one of the bigger factors.
And that's why I do everything, all of my business via email and keep my emails. Sorry, Ryan, for taking up all the space.
Madam Chair. I don't want to get into too much on this, but first of all, I want to state, I appreciate your statement today that you did not ask to be on the agenda.
Never would I ever ask to be on your agenda.
Because.
Smart lady.
The previous meeting, it was stated categorically that you had asked to be on the agenda and that I, as chairman, refused you from being on the agenda. That was not the case. There was a budget amendment that did come before our agenda, pre-agenda meeting, and it is in our policy of this board that the county manager and the chairman at that time do in fact establish what goes on the agenda. That means there are some, a number of things that are issued to go on an agenda, and someone has to make a decision what goes on with it. And so I happened to be the chairman at the time that this particular budget amendment came before us. Here was my concern. If in fact, we're not talking about a pay raise for an employee, we're talking about board members. And your board sent forth a proposal, voted on unanimously by your board, to come with a budget amendment in the middle of the budget year to increase their pay as a board member. These are board stipends for board members.
Correct.
So as such, if we had approved that, then every other board in commission, all their boards, would turn around and say, well, they got a raise, why can't I get a raise?
Well.
It was establishing some precedence.
Okay.
And I just simply, in agreement with all, in fact, it was a unanimous vote of all those that were in that agenda meeting. One day, it wasn't my decision to remove this, so I just want to explain that. It was a unanimous agreement of all those present that we sent that budget amendment back and asked that it be presented during the budget time. That's all that happened here. So all of this uproar over board members getting an increase during the middle of a budget year can all be handled if you'll just simply have it submitted during the budget time. Thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Ms. Chair? No, no. I didn't, I didn't have my say. And I know you're probably getting tired, but first off, thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you for being very thorough in regard to the election, things that occur. I really appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work you, the staff, the board, and our volunteer, well, our, you know, volunteers, paid volunteers for the elections. I really appreciate everybody. In regards to the $8,000, I think that is, in my opinion, it's just a drop in the bucket. I understand, but my board members are stating that during the, you know, during our process, we normally discuss those things and allocate. In my opinion, you know, I think that we should have just moved forward, and if your board, you know, they wanted to take the risk and catch flak that they want to raise, and I don't see a problem with allocating that fund to your board and to those individuals that are part-time employees. I know that I'm probably going to get, won't get what I, what I think you're asking for, but I'm going to make a motion that we approve the $8,000 today.
Second.
Ms. Parker, is that something we can do?
Madam, I got one more question for the county manager. Mr. Crumpler, how many committees do we have?
Committees?
Yeah.
Forty-six committees.
It went over how many people that is?
Over 100.
But we have the discretion. It doesn't matter if, I understand this board is saying we're going, that we're going to make presidents, that everybody may come. They could come all they want, but we have the choice to say we're going to give them, allocate funds to them or not.
What I think about it is, one, how many of those boards are, are paid? Two, are they underpaid? If they're underpaid, why can't they come and say something? I mean, you know, at the end of the day, don't we want to treat people in this county fairly? Don't we want to be competitive with other counties? Or do we just want to keep sitting here doing the same old thing as usual? Come on, man. I mean, we've been doing this for the longest. Like, that, that old mindset needs to go. It's ridiculous.
Madam Chair.
So it's not, it's not an excuse for it.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Chair.
Like I said.
Like I said before, I don't have a problem with the pay increase, but I just feel like, you know, me and Joe's been on this board the longest of anybody else. I mean, but budget time, we spend a lot of time working on the budget, you know, and all of that is done at budget time. I mean, I, I'll be the first one to vote for a pay increase for the board of elections, but at budget time. I mean, and that's my stand. I just.
Madam Chair, and I'm just going to say this. Yes, you and Joe have been on this board the longest, but you and Joe are also the reason why we're building a $42 million jail right now that could have been built years ago. So does that mean any, does that make, does that count for anything? No. That time doesn't matter. I've been doing politics for four years prior to this with the city. So, I mean, it doesn't matter. We're talking about trying to make some things happen, trying to change some things around here. We keep talking about this, what we used to do, this, 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 that. Okay, that's great.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foster, I'll take that offensive statement you just made certainly had this board, the past board, long before I came on this board, has made right decisions and made wrong decisions. But to sit here and say that me and Joe made the decision not to build a jail years ago, I take that as offensive and, I mean, we can build and do anything we want to in this county, but the citizens of this county is likely to pay for it.
Madam Chair.
If we want to raise the taxes to do it, you know, so be it.
Okay, okay.
I'm just going to say, Madam Chair, was my statement not true? Offensive or not, I could care less. It's whether it was true or not true. So until you can state, prove that it's not true, then there we go.
Madam Chair. I just want to say one thing. I've been a volunteer over there. I've been a chief judge. Nicholas brought me up in the ranks, and I really appreciate it. Those folks deserve what they get. You know, you're talking about people that work in the long hours and so on and so forth. And whether it's, the board, I could definitely take this thing out of here. I think the board is a separate issue, but the temporary workers and so on and so forth deserve that raise.
Madam Chair, I ain't said nothing to do, go ahead, frame someone.
And we have a motion on the floor, Madam Chair.
I got one question. I've sat here and I haven't said anything, so I'm going to say what I got.
Which is unusual for.
Exactly. I'm just sitting here listening to everybody. I was talking about the same thing. So I got no issue, I was on the board of elections. I got no issue with that. How much of the board members, how much of that is board members? How much of that is pay increase?
The pay increases I worked into the budget. You guys approved a budget amendment this morning, I think, for me.
Was it?
That was last meeting.
That was the election, the early voting site workers.
The pay, the budget amendment that came before you all was board members.
Was the 8,073 was.
I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, what the other budget amendment approved?
Yes.
For the temporary help?
Yes.
Yes.
So I was able to move money within my budget to cover that final bill for my early voting site workers. So I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to pay the early voting site workers $15 per hour and the coordinators $17 per hour for this entire election cycle with only a $5,000 discrepancy without budgeting for that. Okay? Going forward, definitely. My, you know, it'll be $15 an hour for the workers and $17 an hour for the coordinators. The 8,073 is for the board members. They make $250 a month right now. That's it. Base $250 a month. They're named in litigation. They attend trainings. I mean, they're bombarded with emails about legal opinions and numbered memos and complaints from me. So, you know, even if you were on the board previously, elections has definitely changed in the last two years. I think we can all agree on that, that elections has definitely changed. All I'm trying to do is, you know, compensate people fairly. And yes, I should have done it during budget time, but in my defense, I was conducting an election, and I did my best on my budget.
You did a good job.
So the $8,073, did that just take you out through the end of the year?
For the board members to increase their pay to $400 per month through the end of the fiscal year. And then next year, I'll budget for $400 per month. And I'm also going to budget for travel and phone expenses for them going forward as well.
Okay, so we've got, so you've actually covered the pay increase for the employees, the ones that we got issued, the temporary employees. We've got that covered.
Covered.
That's already been taken care of. So really what we're talking, I think that was the issue, I think that was the issue that we had was the employees.
That budget amendment was approved at your last meeting.
Right.
It's in your agenda package under the.
Right, well, I just want to say that part's done.
Yes.
So really, is that the issue that we got on the board? Is the employees? Or is it the, is the issue we got? Is the board members?
Board members.
Okay. Madam Chair, call the question.
We have a motion on the floor. Can, is this, okay, we have a motion. Would you like to repeat your motion?
Yes, that we, that we approve the allocation of funding for the board's request.
From 250 to 400.
Correct.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we increase board members from 250 to 400? How do you so vote? Please raise.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Let's make one statement. My vote is for, it was negative for the board members. The employees, I fully support. Anything you come before us, I'm going to support you. But for the board members.
Mental note.
But for the board members, wait the budget season.
And I agree with Commissioner Horst on that. That was the reason.
I'm on several boards that I am not getting paid for. And I would never vote for a pay increase on myself. But for your employees, tell them thank you.
Yeah, I do. We don't get a lot of thanks, so we do appreciate.
Believe me, I know.
Thank you.
A lot of slings and arrows, but.
Yeah.
A little praise.
Thank you for what y'all did.
Thank you.
Just be ready for the budget in February.
I'll try. I need some time off, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crumpler?
Moving on to item number two under special presentations is the audit by Dana Lane of Number Sheeran Azalea.
Good morning. I'm Paul Dunn. This is Dana Lane. We've got our presentation for the.
You don't have a budget amendment, do you?
No. It should be pretty easy this year.
This is what I was supposed to do. That was that before. This is the. On the bottom, it says Dana presentation. See, on the bottom, you should.
Oh.
I thought you were telling me that I needed an updated one for today, and I didn't even look at it because it was this morning.
It's okay.
Whoops, had it. Don't have it right this second, but you'll have it in just a moment.
It took it out.
Yeah, she can do it from there, but I've got to actually. Yeah, I apologize. This morning, when Allison told me I had a revised one, I thought she meant yours. So I absolutely apologize. I had it and took it out because I didn't want the wrong one to show.
2022.
This will use it up our six to 10 minutes, won't it?
I promise I'll get it right back to you.
You're not a clocky.
Luckily, ours is.
The clock has not started.
I whispered to Paul, I said, I didn't know we had six to 10 minutes.
That's what this book is. I don't know if six or 10 minutes is enough.
We're just going to hit highlights for you.
Six to 10 minutes on each section.
We're just going to hit highlights for you.
Other information.
There we go.
My apologies.
It's okay.
But you can drive it from up there.
There we go. Paul Dunn's going to start.
Okay, I'm going to start out. Just give you a quick overview. Of course, we completed audit for Wayne County. And we have the independent auditors report. And what we've issued is an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that we can issue, that the financial statements are fairly presented. Our responsibilities are our opinion, which we just issued. And then we gather audit evidence, which is most of the time that we spend out here is getting audit evidence to support our opinion. And then we have supplemented other information, such as information on the pension plan and elders and those type reports. So there are two other reports. One of them is the MDNA, the Management Discussion and Analysis, and the other one is the letter of transmission. So if you read those two reports, it'll talk about financial highlights, overview of financial statements, comparative figures, the budgetary highlights and the economic factors of next year's budgets. It talks about in pretty, real good detail about what happened last year, what's going to happen next year and future years. So that's really good reading to try to digest those two reports. And now Dana's going to go over the, some of the financial statements.
So where to start? In your book, it's page 33. So what I do is I pull out items that you have the most control over. You have the most control over the general fund with the general government fund. And that's the statement that I pulled out to present today. A lot of the other funds are dictated by the purpose, like special revenue funds and taxes and capital project funds, all those income and expenses. That's dictated by your budgetary decisions by law and things like that. But the general fund is really how you operate and cover your day-to-day operations. So I pulled out this part of the governmental funds financial statement so that you can look at it and you can see that your cash at the end of the year was around 41 million. You had restricted cash around 12 million. That's ARP funds and lots of different types of restrictions there, that there's a good schedule in the financial statement. Note disclosures, that'll tie to that $12 million figure. Giving you total assets of around 73 million. You had some liabilities at the end of the year, about 1.4 million, and some deferred inflow of resources. And that's really another form of liability, primarily dealing with taxes and some other minor things. And then that, you take your assets, you subtract your liabilities and your deferred inflows, and you will see that your fund balance is around $70 million. Of course, over 50% have various restrictions to them. Stabilization by the state, your QSCAB loan that is getting close, another couple of years should be paid off. You have to set those funds aside because you really don't make a debt payment. You set it aside as a restriction. You have some other grant restrictions and things like that, giving you unassigned fund balance, or the fund balance that's kind of your reserve of another $30 million. Okay? Next, I pulled up your budget and actual comparison for the general fund. Okay? And you will see that you budgeted a final budget of 143 million in revenues. You ended up 136 million for a decrease of $5 million. You did not make your budgeted revenues. Now, that is not a statutory finding. Expenditures would be findings. Revenues are just the goal. And really, the biggest part was restricted intergovernmental. It had to do with the ARPA funds being budgeted, but not really expended or earned because you hadn't expended them yet. So therefore, it caused a large variance that looks a little misleading on the face of the statement. Total expenditures were budgeted at about 150 million. You ended up at 116 million, giving you under expenditures of $31 million. Did some transfers in and some transfer outs for some projects, increasing your general fund balance for the year of about $3.5 million. Now, next in here, I have a graph. It just gives you a very good visual presentation of where your money comes from. And you can see that over, almost 50% comes from your property taxes, another 22% from sales tax, and then some large pieces for public safety and human services. And that's how you operate your day-to-day. And if you look at the bottom right corner of that graph, that is prior year.
What popped you off?
Oh, sorry, it's the, what page? Oh, the graphs aren't in there. Graphs aren't in there. I'm just doing a visual presentation of the stuff that was on the page before. And so that way, you can see those, the prior year and current year pretty much operate the same year to year. Those pies look pretty much the same year to year. And that's just a visual representation of your revenues. And then your expenditures. Again, the pies look almost identical to current year and prior year. And you will see your biggest pieces of the pie are public safety, education, human services, like social services, public health, things like that. And then general gov being the fourth biggest piece of the pie in ranking. So the revenues on the page before graph, this is how you pay for these various expenses are from that revenues. Okay? There are other reports we issue. We issue compliance reports, and that's because you get so much federal and state funding. Internal controls, we had no findings. In the federal program compliance report, we did have one finding with social services, and that has already been corrected. And then in the state programs, we had no findings during our testing because we test specific pots of money that you receive from the federal and state government. The communication of no material weaknesses, that means that we did not say, that we did not find any significant internal control issues, and that you can rely on the figures that you are given, not just from this audit, but on a regular basis, that if you are given a figure, then that is not a material variance, and things have been corrected on a daily basis, not just on an annual basis. Okay? We do use that same report as an other recommendation, and there is a subscription-based technology arrangement. GAZB, it's kind of software-driven that will make a change next year in the financial statements, that booking these subscription-based technology arrangements. We issue a communication to those charged with governance, basically the board, that there was a change in accounting policies this year, and that was the implementation of the governmental accounting standard board leases. They did a huge thing where they say you now have a right to use that lease, and we had to book that right to use. We also had to book lease receivables for things like rent and things like that that you receive. There were some accounting estimates. We had no significant difficulties, no disagreement with the staff. And the staff had to sign a representation letter that tells us they entered all our questions. They, they didn't hide anything from us. Or, you know, there's lots of questions about seven-page, seven-page document that they have to pay, that they have to sign to, to us. All right. So last year, we went over this, the new thing last year with these state performance indicators and the unit results. This is what the LGC is watching when audits are turned in for a county. Okay? And this is the performance indicators and where the county stands with these performance indicators. So it says your general fund balance available should be between 20 and 39%. And as you can see, you are at the far, the higher end of that set aside, and that's around 37%. And this is important reserve for units because clash flows come into the county like this. You know, your property taxes, you get a lot of money, certain months, and then they dwindle off. Grants come in like this. So you want to have that reserve in order to pay your day-to-day operations because of your fluctuations in revenues. And that's why that's such an important statistical result.
Dana, can I stop you there about?
Yep.
What, what was the drop in about 10% from 21 to 22?
You transferred quite a bit to capital projects. You transferred quite a bit to capital projects of your reserves. The water and sewer fund, that is what's called a quick ratio. It should be greater than one, which means that your current assets in the water sewer fund exceed the current liabilities in the water and sewer fund. And you have the same exact figure as the year before. You don't keep a whole lot of reserves in there, because you are funding that a bit, and we will talk about that on the next slide. So there's two other indicators with water and sewer funds. Water and sewer fund's huge across the state right now. Everybody's aware of that. Lots of studies going on in small towns and counties for this. They have two statistical items, the operating net income. Now, that operating net income comes from the financial statements, but they take depreciation out of the picture, and they add that debt service and interest that you pay. Because governments operate basically cash, modified cash accounting, where you're operating day-to-day. So for a water and sewer fund, that debt payment is a cash transaction, so therefore it's a budgeted transaction. Okay? And when you look at your results for three years, you have been in the red for this. And that means that your fees are not covering the operations like they're supposed to. And this is an ongoing issue. I did propose that maybe the sewer fund shouldn't be a proprietary fund and needs to be researched and considered, because you only have 10 or 12 units that you're charging. And the city's raising the rate every single year on those services. And so you're expecting 10 or 12 to continue to carry the burden of this. Now, this negative figure comes directly from your debt payment, though. That is associated with the schools, but this is where instructions were made, that that debt stayed in the proprietary fund. So you're gonna have it for a while. And the bad part about it is if you have a red result, you have to respond to the LGC with a letter within two months of my presentation. So Allison's well aware of that, and I think you guys have had some discussions already about it. But, and with all these different studies, you might not want to close it into the general gov at this point, but it's just something to think about, depending on how these studies go forth. Okay? Because I don't think it's fair for 12 entities to support all your operations of the sewer fund, especially in a portion of it's the school system that's causing this red finding here. Okay? I know you have a question.
No, I do. So to paraphrase what you just said. We expanded our sewer by running a sewer line out to the Grantham Elementary School.
Right.
And you're saying that for some reason, the cost of financing that is actually in the sewer fund, when we felt like that that cost should be borne by the county, because that was providing a utility to a school facility.
Correct. So you transfer over each year money to cover?
And you're saying the LGC is requiring you to actually incorporate that into the sewer?
It was something to do with the bond issuance, that that expands the sewer system, so therefore it's on the proprietary fund as the sewer, for the sewer.
And can you tell me what the amount would be for the payment of this loan?
The debt principal and interest was 151,780.
151.
So if you had that 150, if you took that 150 out of there, you are covering your cost for the sewer fund.
But still, just barely.
But just barely.
Well, that was what I wanted. So basically-
And if you look at the year before, you had 150, you would have had a loss, because that payments around the same every year.
So basically, in this last year, it's about a $30,000 positive, if you-
Took that into consideration. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that could be the sewer meters that we put in place, too. Can you do a transfer from another fund, enterprise fund, to keep you out of the negative? I mean, do we do that?
The transfers are below the operating net income calculation. You do do that. You transfer in enough to cover that payment. That's why your, your quick ratio on the slide before was only slightly above one, because you just send over there what you have to, to cover that payment.
My concern is that for the next, how many years?
Right.
This is gonna continue to show on the audit.
Right. But, I mean, Allison and I talked about it, and she said that there are some studies and some regionalization stuff, that this might be a mute issue soon. I don't know. Government moves slow, in my opinion.
It definitely does.
I, you know, it's just something to think about. And honestly, there's no way, the state has not given us a way to say, hey, this is an exception. You've already heard about this. Why do we have to keep responding? They haven't perfected this process yet. So maybe they will say, okay, if that's our only finding, then Allison doesn't have to respond. I don't know. Maybe we can get them to commit to that, because this is just flat-out numbers in their spreadsheet. Okay? And then the other one is unrestricted cash over total expenses, needs to be greater than 16%, and you have 87%. So you're meeting that statistical performance indicator. So then, there's these other just general questions. Was the audit report submitted timely? Yes. Was your tax levy a negative percentage? It wasn't. Decrease in property value? No. No budget issues, no court order issues, you're not on the unit assistance list, no statutory violations, no debt service issue, landfill's not closing, and no material or significant findings reported in the audit. So the only response letter that you have to have by February, oh, 23, sorry, I got my year off, is by February 20th of '23, and that's that operating income loss, which is easy to explain. She can probably just pull up last year's.
Yeah, and you actually all have, well, I think I have to have the majority of the board sign it. So what I did last year was presented it at a, at a board meeting. So most likely, I'll present it at the second meeting in January.
Oh, and Paul didn't mention this. You did get the CAFR award again for 63021, but we were just informed of it last week, so therefore, the print, the one in your audit is for 63020. We just repeated that one.
What award is this?
It's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellent in Financial Reporting.
Well, that sounds fantastic.
I believe it is.
This same time, that's really important.
Amen.
So, any other questions, Allison?
On the Department of Health and Human Services.
Uh huh.
I know you found a family. Can you just enlighten me a little more on that?
So every month, you turn in from social services. It's called, we call it cross-cutting, but it's also, it's called the 1571. It's where they get the cost to cover salaries and administrative costs. And I have to, once a year, pick a test month, and I trace everything reported on that to source documents. Discovered a formula error in the spreadsheet that was being used in DSS, which caused you to receive about 89,000, 80-something thousand dollars. Too much money. It has already been corrected. In October, they corrected it by reducing the amount received for these costs by that same figure. And she scheduled training immediately with her local business liaison to come out and do training on the cross-cutting for her entire staff. I suggested she reach out to the county because, finance office, because the finance office is the backup for those reports, as far as they approve it out of this office, too. And so I suggested that maybe an employee from this office attend that training, and also took it as a training opportunity, because Allison was gone on this particular one, and took it as a training opportunity for her assistant on what to look for when she signs off. So in the future, maybe that, we don't normally find anything on cross-cutting, but that year, we did.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna get ahead of a question that are gonna come. And I'm just wondering whether or not we need to possibly incorporate that into the budget. There are citizens that actually review this budget. And the question's going to be, why did you raise taxes when your reserves have, have gone up? And I think the answer that I plan to give, and that is, we plan for reserves to go up by raising taxes to accommodate the tremendous number of capital projects that this county is encountering. And with today's age of escalating prices, we felt like it was prudent to give us those additional reserves to combat that. But I'm sure there are going to be individuals that are going to seriously question our increase in reserves. That said, very similar to the chart you showed earlier, and that is, we increase reserves, and then we pay for capital projects. The same thing is happening here. Unfortunately, or fortunately, in this case, we've got a number of large projects, so the reserve has to go up a little bit larger. Does that make sense?
Your reserve, your unassigned fund balance actually decreased because of you funding those projects.
Right.
Well-
You might have had a, a net increase for the year of your income and expenses, but you used that increase to fund those capital projects.
Well, what I'm trying to say is this, maybe we need almost a disclaimer, so that individuals can go to the executive summary to see the explanation for that. There needs to be an explanation for it.
The note disclosures are yours, not mine. And if you want to add something to it, you are more than welcome to add something.
Allison will develop a statement to that effect.
You can have a note disclosure about property taxes, if you like. But that is not, it's not required. It would just be extra, and that is entirely up to management and the board.
But it was planned. It was planned to increase our, our reserves, so that we could accommodate them.
Well, how that information is in the letter of transmission, when it talks about future projects, just doesn't make it a direct reference back to the increase in fund balance.
Or the property taxes.
Yeah, or property tax increase.
Okay.
Anyway.
Well, great. Thank you.
So there are a couple of different places you could put it in. Any other questions, Allison?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas.
We'll have a motion to accept the-
To move.
Who made that? I'm sorry. Thank you. All of them, prove, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Or you, you pose? You're four, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
While we're thinking about this, when we go to our retreat, make sure we, we discuss that sewer and water loss issue, and see, you know, I'd like to discuss that a little further. Thank you.
Thank you again. We move to our, well, we're a little past the time, but 9:15 a.m. public hearing to receive public comments regarding a proposed installment financing agreement, or similar financing agreement to finance a new jail facility for the county of Wayne. Following the public hearing, the board of commissioners may choose to act on this matter. We probably wish to wait until we get through with unfinished business, but we open that up for 9:15 public hearing, for public comment.
Madam Chair, do we have anybody that has signed up?
We do, yes, ma'am. We have a Mr. Larry Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right, I tell you, I love to hear finance. Well, my name is Larry Jones. I'm president of Norway Lunai and Friends, located in the big city of Fremont, North Carolina. I said, city. What I like to do is just bring up some points of concerns and assistance that we will look forward for the county to help Fremont and our new project called Invest in Fremont. A couple of things I'm gonna hit would be a community block grant.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, if we could-
I apologize. Right now, it's public, it's a public hearing regarding the jail.
Okay, I thought it was bottom.
No, sir, we don't have public comments at the second meeting. This is, this is for public hearing.
All right, well, sorry.
Come back to the first meeting of, of January.
First meeting in January.
Madam Chair, then we have no one for the public hearing? You could now close the public hearing, unless there's anything that you wish to discuss. I can close the public hearing?
Moving on to the appointment committee.
We do have some appointments, and unfortunately, Commissioner-
Would you like me to read those? We have them here.
Okay. Madam Chair, this is coming to you in the form of a motion. Motion reappoint Samira Gabali, Charles Bratson, Vickery, and Adrian World to the board of directors at Wayne Health Corporation. They come to you in the form of a motion.
Do you want to have a motion to approve the appointment committee's recommendations?
Let me go ahead, I'm gonna read that next one, so I can keep you on. Motion to appoint Cherry Dobson to Wayne County Library Advisory Board, replacing the uninspired term of Charles Bratson.
Is that it?
That's it, Madam Chair.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment committee?
That was the motion.
Okay. All right.
You need to vote on them separately, however. So the first, the first motion is for the Wayne County- I'm sorry, the Wayne UNC Board of Health, or Board of Directors, Wayne UNC Health Board of Directors for Dr. Caspari, Brandy Vickery, and Adrian World to be reappointed, which is recommended by the Board of Directors. That's the motion for the first one.
All right, we have a motion on the floor? Can we say?
So, okay, yep.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. All right, next one. All those opposed? All those opposed?
Okay. Motion to appoint Chair Dobson to the Wayne, Wayne County Library Advisory Board.
All those approved, raise your right hand. All those in favor? Okay.
And that's it, Madam Chair.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item one is a presentation on financing options for the jail expansion project by Ted Cole with Davenport, and he is here.
Apologies for naming you Ted Davenport.
Yes, we're back. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everybody's doing well. There's a copy of this coming around as we speak. It's set up very similar to what we walked through last week, but it's been updated based on some of the things that we had discussed. And I'll, I'll just let those get passed around here. Everybody got it? Okay, great. Well, there are page numbers in the lower right corner, so I would go to the second page. Brief overview of notes on the left-hand side of this page, and this is an update from what we ran last week. We had been running analyses last week on what we're calling the base bid of 41,718. And during the meeting, it was discussed about some of the other soft costs, design costs, A and E fees. Do we want to consider including those in the borrowing? And I think the general answer was yes, otherwise, it's gonna be cash-funded. So when you take the base cost plus those contingencies and fees, we're at 48.1 million. So our analysis today is funding 48.1 million plus cost of issuance. So any loan scenario we look at, when it closes, the county gets 48.1 million. The other thing that's important to note, when we talk about the capital plan and the impact on the county's capital plan, not only are we funding this project, but we have a placeholder in there for the DSS project that had been assumed to be a $32 million project, I believe scheduled to be bid this spring. I think it's the current thinking. In talking with staff, we made a decision to bump that to an even 40 million, just anticipation of what's going on with capital costs. Obviously, we don't, we won't know till it's bid, but felt like there was the basis for doing that. So that, that's also in the analysis, as is a $3 million borrowing for the community college, the CITE facility, C-I-T-E. So not only are we modeling the 48 million for the jail, that is what the financing is that we're discussing, but the model also builds in the assumed 40 for DSS, 30 for community college, and those- community college, and those projects are in our model with a 20-year payback at 5%. Okay? So when we talk about the impact to the capital plan, it's not just about the jail. It includes the DSS along with all the pay-go that you all do every year for IT and vehicles and things of that nature. We went back to all of the banks that proposed originally, and we asked them to confirm, among other things, that we could go up to 50 million, and we asked for 15-year interest rates if they hadn't approved, provided them on the front end, if they wanted to revisit any part of their original proposal, whether it's the interest rate, the terms and conditions, their, their bank council fees, where we could invest the funds. We gave them all an opportunity to revisit any element of the proposal that they wished to. Schedule-wise, you've held the public hearing. What we're going through now with the proposals, we would ask to get some direction today on what proposal to go with. If you're not able to give that to us today, we would do that on January 3, and we could still be on track. If you're not able to make that, give us that direction today, that could be done on January 3. That's really the last opportunity for the proposals we have, because we've got to submit an LGC application that first week of January. February 7 is when the LGC would consider approval, and that would be, that would also be when you all would do your final approval. So as I said, it's a two-step approval process, a preliminary resolution that would happen today or at the latest January 3, and then a final approval that would be scheduled for February 7 in order to stay on track for the LGC in February and to be able to close by mid-February, which is what all the proposals anticipate. All right, so this page will look familiar. Couple of things, and I know this will be somewhat tedious, but I think it's important, given our conversation last week. And we're going to start with JP Morgan. And if you remember, JP Morgan would only go 15 years. We know that. They didn't provide a 20-year rate, and they're not able to provide a 20-year rate. Remember with JP Morgan, there's a construction period. They call it the availability period. We've assumed that's a 24-month period, and we've assumed that you draw the money down on a monthly basis from JP Morgan. So you don't take all the money at closing. You draw it down month by month to pay your contractors. And every time you draw the money down from JP Morgan, they set the interest rate on that amount of money. So in theory, you would have 24 draws from JP Morgan, one a month for 24 months, right? Paying for the construction. And each of those draws will be, the interest rate on that will be set at the time of the draw, based on a formula that they've provided. They provide the formula upfront, but the rate itself will be set at the time of the draw. Now, we've assumed in the, for the purposes of our analysis, that the current rate, which is a 416, stays in place for the entire 24 months. We obviously don't know if that will be the case. It could go up, it could go down. But what's important to know is the draws themselves will be set, the interest rate on those draws will be set when they're drawn and will be locked in for whatever period of time remains on the 24-month construction period. Their long-term rate for when the loan starts amortizing, which is following 24 months of construction, after the first two years, their loan then starts amortizing for the final 13 years. They've offered now three options. Option one is non-callable, meaning you enter the loan and you can never prepay it. Option two is prepayable beginning seven years after closing. And option three is prepayable beginning 10 years after closing. All right? So they gave three different prepayment options for that same loan. The non-callable, 313, seven-year no-call, three, I'm going to round up, 330, and the 10-year no-call, I'm going to round up, 319. See that? Those rates cannot be locked in until the LGC approves on 2/7. So the soonest you could lock that amortizing rate, whether it's option one, two, or three, would be February 7, or as soon as the LGC approves the loan. From yesterday, late afternoon, to this morning, those rates have moved, and there's a few things going on in the market last night. And as, as odd as this may sound, the Bank of Japan changed their stance on financial matters, the controlling of their currency, and interest rates. That surprised the financial markets. I don't pretend to know all the details behind it, but it was an unexpected event, a shift in their policy. And so just as a point of comparison, the 313 is now a 320. The 329 is now a 335. And the 318 is now a 323. So it just illustrates the point of, look, if we're not able to lock that rate in until 2/7 or until the LGC approves, we are subject to whatever events occur completely out of our control. Now, to be fair, it could come back down between now and then. We just don't know. So our analysis are based on the red numbers you've got here, but they're a little bit higher this morning. Okay? So 15 years only, the draws, you cannot set those rates until you draw the money, and then the amortizing rate for the 13 years of amortization can't be set till LGC approval. And they gave us three options for different prepayment ability.
And if I could interrupt, but it's very clear the Federal Reserve has indicated they are intending to raise interest rates further. I think that was their last statement.
They have signaled that. Now, they might, they might, I believe they're signaling that maybe they're not going to raise them at the same pace, 75 basis points, maybe it's 50 basis points, maybe they tail off, but they have signaled additional increases, and they've signaled higher rates for a longer period of time to try to manage inflation. I'm going to ask you all to, just while we're talking about JP Morgan, flip back to page 11. This is not the exact indice for how JP Morgan sets their rate, but it is a component to how they calculate the rate, and it's an acronym, SOFR, Secured Overnight Funding Rate. They have a formula that they will go through when we set the, the rate on each draw, and they have a formula that they'll go through when we set the amortizing rate after the LGC approval. And it is tied to this indice called SOFR. We've graphed this year-to-date '22, just for perspective, and it's gone over that period from a low of a 150 to a high of 4%. It's now sitting right around a 3 and 1/4. It clearly doesn't move in a smooth line. It's sort of more sawtoothed, but it's generally been moving higher to the tune of, you know, 1.75% from the lows to where it is today, and it was as high as 2 and 1/2% from the lows of early January. So it's been moving in an upward trend, but it hasn't moved upward every single month or week or whatever period of time you'd like to look at it. So we just know, by virtue of their proposal, we have exposure to interest rate movement between now and when we lock in that amortizing loan, and for the draws, we have it for the next presumably two years, because there's no way to mitigate the draw. It has to be set when the money is pulled down. Okay. TD Bank, somewhat similar. They gave us rate indications on, and they added, they added the 15-year terms for us, right? So their option one, you can't prepay it for seven years. Their option two, you can't prepay it for 10 years. And for the 15-year amortization, it's a 357, and for the 10, option one, and for option two, it's a 352. That's on your page. As of this morning, for probably much the same reason, although through a totally different indice, their 357 goes to a 362, and their 352 goes to a 357. With TD Bank, we can lock today if that's the decision. We don't have to wait for LGC. So TD Bank, we're floating technically right this moment, but we could lock today versus after LGC approval. But rates are up as of about 8 o'clock this morning, and they may be up further now. I don't know. On the 20-year, 364 has now gone to a 369, and a 358 has gone to a 363. Again, could be locked as early as this afternoon. Truist, their prepayment language is the same as it was. They did add a 15-year term. That is a 362. It's fixed now, and the only parameter we have with them is we got to close by February 17. There's no lock, there's no decision to lock the rate, there's no acceptance deadline. And they revisited their 20-year rate. That had been a 379, 379, now it's a 368. Webster, similar story. They had been a 20-year, four...
Hold on a minute. Like I said on Truist, they went from 370...
On the 20-year.
On the 20-year, went from 3.7...
3.79.
To 3.68.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty good drop.
That's a nice move. That, that was reflecting their indice, right? It may not be SOFR, it may not, it's whatever they looked at from the date of the original proposal to, I think it was Thursday.
And that's a lock-in rate.
It's done.
It's done.
I, I believe Truist's indice has gone up yesterday and today, but that doesn't...
So we asked them last Thursday.
That's right. And that's the way they bid. It's not, when they submit the bid, it's fixed for a closing date. There's no movement with an indice. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Webster is very similar. They added a 15-year rate. You can see that's a 367, and they refreshed their 20-year rate. It's now a 389. It had been a 407. So over that period of time of the original proposals, having the meeting last week, going back to them to get 15-year rates and giving them an opportunity to revisit their 20-year rates, the markets had moved in a way that that's a benefit to you all. Capital One, the same. They did reduce their rates, but they're still indicative rates, and we can, they're not really competitive, so we're not going to spend a ton of time talking about Capital One, but we're still floating. Okay? All right, so that's the interest rate situation. The next page just pulls in some other key components, and I'll, I'll kind of walk from top to bottom, and across the left-hand margin is kind of lines. Interest rates, we've covered those. Prepayment language, we've covered those, right? JP Morgan gave us three options for prepayment, but the soonest we could exercise a prepayment is after seven years. TD Bank gave us two options. The soonest we could exercise a prepayment is seven years. Truist gave us one option. One of them is applicable to the 15 and one's 20, and remember what that is, is the first half of the loan is prepayable with a 1% penalty, and the second half of the loan is prepayable with no penalty. And that's true of the 15 and 20 years. So it'd be the first half is seven and 1/2 years versus first half being 10 years, but it is prepayable starting immediately. Line three, acceptance and rate expiration. JP Morgan, we need to accept by January 1. I think they'd be willing to give us to January 3 if that's the decision. Then we've got to wait for LGC approval before we can lock anything. TD Bank, we've got to rate, lock their rate, and then we, we're kind of done floating with the market. Truist, we've got to close by February 17. All of them are giving you all the flexibility to put the money in the capital management trust. I think that would be the likely place to put it. That is currently yielding almost 4%. So with JP Morgan, you pull the money down and you spend it, right? You pay a bill with it. So you never really invest that money. With the others, you would pull all the money at closing and put it into an account. Let's say you put it in the capital management trust, which would be pretty typical. You are accruing interest to the bank at the 3-point-whatever rate the loan is, but you're investing it in the capital management trust, which today is 4%, but it varies. It's generally been moving higher. Most would say it will probably continue to move higher. So during that construction period, you're earning at or above, at least currently, at or above what you're paying the bank in interest. That doesn't mean it'll be that way for the full 24 months, but it's a positive situation initially. The bank fees, really no changes there. They were given, asked, requested to revisit those. Those that have them continue to charge them, and, and nothing's really changed there. Credit approval, Truist is technically fully approved. The others are subject to final, but again, I wouldn't consider that a, a real critical factor. It would be very surprising there would be any issue at this stage in the game with any of them about approving this loan. All of them are subject to getting documents done and all the lawyers signing off, but the credit work, I think, is straightforward. Lenders' counsel, that's just the firms that would be representing the banks. And then these other considerations, the only things I would note under JP Morgan, I don't think this is a big deal, but while the loan is outstanding, it's the second bullet point, the county cannot contract out the operation of the jail facility to a third-party operator. I'm not sure you would. I don't know whether that's even permitted, honestly, legally, but you all need to continue to operate the facility rather than contract it with a third-party operator.
So if that option came up and future boards, then they would have to pay the loan off.
That's right. Now, I will also tell you, even if you go with one of these other banks, it may be that if you did that with a third-party operator, that it would require the loan to go from tax-exempt to taxable. So it's, it's going to be an issue probably no matter what you do. It's just that JP Morgan explicitly said, you can't do it. If you do, we got to be paid off, whereas the others haven't precluded you from doing it. But at, when and if that were to ever happen, the bond attorneys might say, because there's a third party here, this loan is no longer eligible for tax-exempt. We've got to convert it to taxable, and that would be part of that decision at that time, whether that made sense. TD Bank, they did not want to waive that rating downgrade provision, but they did say it will only apply for the 20-year loan. It would not apply for the 15-year loan. That's the one covenant that was a little bit odd for them. The real estate-related requirements, flood certifications, flood insurance are all pretty comparable from one lender to the next. Truist really didn't have any unique or what I might call noteworthy terms and conditions. Pretty straightforward. Page six is Webster and Capital One. I don't think we need to go through those, because I don't think Capital One is in play. And I think if you like what Truist is offering, you would like what, no, excuse me, if you like what Webster is offering, you would like Truist better, because Truist has lower rates. They're very, very similar in every other respect. So that takes us to page seven. I know there's a lot of numbers here, but it's pretty straightforward if we just break it down. This is only the 15-year proposals. So we've got across the top, JP Morgan, three options based on non-callable, seven-year, 10-year no-call. TD, we've got two options, seven-year no-call, 10-year no-call. Truist, one option. Webster, one option. Capital One, one option. And that public sale, one option. In every one of these, on line... In every one of these, on line 12, we are solving to give the county 48.13 million. That's across the board. And we've got cost of issuance built in there for every scenario to make sure that we're accounting for that and not, you know, underestimating. Well, I kind of jumped down. Line, uh, line three is the interest rates. We know these have changed a little bit. They've gone up for the ones in red. Um, interest rate lock is an important date. For JP Morgan, it's after 27, assuming LGC approves. TD Bank could be done today. The others are set, at least Truist is set. We have the payment dates, closing date. All of these are assumed to close in mid-February. As I said, we were giving everybody, in every scenario, 48.1 million, line 12 and the other cost of issuance. And then we're showing you the debt service by year. Sums up on line 37, right? And so you can see the annual payments versus the total debt service for every one of these JP Morgan is the lowest because their rates are the lowest, right? And when you focus like under column D, which is JP Morgan's option three, now that rate has gone up a little bit. It's gone up from a 318 to a 322 or a 323, so that, that debt service will go up. But we've compared that one to all the others on line 39. Because we can't lock the JP Morgan until February 7th, what we've solved for on line 39 is how much higher the JP Morgan rate could go before it equals each other option. So said another way, when you look at JP Morgan option three, which we can't lock the rate till February 7th, and you compare that under, to Truist under column G, between now and February 7th, if the JP Morgan rate goes up by 40 basis points, it will equal Truist. So 0.4%. From yesterday to today, it went up by like 0.05, right? It could go down. We really have no ability to predict what those rates will do between now and February 7th. Just not, not in a position to do that. But the, the, the line 39 will tell you how much movement the JP Morgan rate can go before it equals any other option that you might select. And then the bottom is where we pull in the capital planning model, not just the jail, but the DSS, the site building, all the other capital assumptions that go into the plan that we've worked on, you know, and updated every year. You can see that in every one of these scenarios, the money in the capital plan is not sufficient. There needs to be more dollars brought in to fund the plan sustainably. And we've benchmarked that against, or we've measured it two ways. Pennies on the tax rate on line 49, or dollars needed over some period of time. So let's, let's look under the, the minimal impact, option one JP Morgan. That's where you have no-call ability. To make this work in the model, we need the equivalent of 1.59 pennies worth of revenue brought into the model between 2031 and 32. It's some time off in the future, but technically it's showing that it's short. Alternatively, we need to bring in about 5.8 million dollars, um, over a number of years to fund the model. We have a page that will show you the cash flows on each of these. But you kind of go across line 49, you'll see that we're working in a range of, if you, if you just kind of stop at Truist and you disregard Webster and Capital One and the public markets, you're somewhere between one and a half and two pennies impact. They don't all happen at the same time. JP Morgan's happens a little bit later because they have a more gradual step-up of debt service during that drawdown period. Whereas the others, their debt service kind of starts sooner. So the, the timing of when the money might be needed, um, varies, but it's falling in the range of one and a half to two pennies worth of revenue, or call it six to eight million dollars. That's on line 51. So remember, a big part of what's driving that is what we got in there for DSS, 40 million, site building at 3 million. Both of those are amortizing over 20 years. If that project comes in lower in cost, that will help us. If that project comes in higher in cost, that will exacerbate these issues. If you decide that you want to fund that project over 15 years rather than 20, because it's in the model right now at 20, that would probably increase these impacts. Same setup on page eight, except it's the 20-year terms. And so we just go across the line, fewer number of banks. I think it's probably just worth looking at TD and Truist here. You can see your annual payments. You can see the total debt service on line 42. Again, we're solving for all the same things, 48.1 million, closing in February. You get down to the impacts on the capital plan on line 52. Generally speaking, the 20-year term is falling somewhere around a half a penny worth, right? So going that extra five years of payback, although it's a higher interest rate and you're paying more interest over the life of the loan, right? We know that. There's just, just an extra five years. But the payments are lower and it's quote-unquote more affordable and it, it fits in the model such that you don't need as much revenue flowing into the model as you did on the prior page. So it's about a half a penny's worth and somewhere around a million, a million-two worth of revenue.
I want to check something here.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I know it's got 10 years, you'll have a one, but say on the 11th year, you wanted to say, we did have the money to repay the loan. These figures below that, is that the amount we would pay? I know they're including interest. Would they be the same amount?
If you wanted to refund the loan or pay it off?
Pay it off.
Um, yeah, yeah. So you've got the hash marks where you could do it, right? And so at the, I, no, at that point, there's some amount, if we, if we're borrowing, I'm going to round up. We're borrowing 50 million.
Uh-huh.
And in the first 10 years of a 20-year loan, you're going to pay back 25 million in principal. That is embedded, 25 million dollars is embedded in those payments.
Right.
When the year 10 comes, if you say, I want to pay off the balance, you're going, oh, 25 million dollars. You could, with Truist, you could pay it off with no penalty at year 10. With the other banks, you could pay it off with no penalty. So you could amortize the loan and make these principal and interest payments for the first 10 years. By the time you get to that 10th year, you will have paid back half the loan amount plus interest. And if you said, I want to pay off the balance, you don't pay any interest. You just pay the remaining balance, which will be 25 million dollars.
So you would save quite a bit of interest if, you know-
Oh, sure.
We'd have that option.
You could, yeah, and I don't, I don't know that I could do the math in my head, but-
We paid 25 million up to 10 years, but we're going to end up, if we decide to pay it off, be 50 million. Is that correct?
If you, say one more time?
Say on the 11th year, we decide to pay it off. We're going to save, uh, quite a amount of interest because we've already paid 25 million-
Correct.
First 10 years.
Right.
All right. And you're saying we'll, we'll owe 50 million. I heard 50 million in there.
Well, at the end of 10 years, the original loan, which was 50 million, 25 of it will have been paid back.
Right.
So at the end of 10 years, if you said, how much do I need to come up with to pay off the loan to the bank, you'd need 25 million. And then you would save the interest on the remaining term.
Right. That would be quite a bit.
Uh, it would. I just don't know the number, um, because it's, it's hard to know how much in that second half is principal versus interest. But there's, there is absolutely 25 million in there, just if I might be able to back into it.
I'm looking at, we do have the option, if we do have the funds coming, say in the 11th year, to save a lot of interest if we wanted to pay the loan off, but we're kind of stuck in-
Yeah, most, most, all of these, with the exception of the JP Morgan, where they have that one option that's non-callable, that one, you'll, you cannot pay it off, um, early. But all the others, whether it's seven or 10 years, yes, you would have the option to prepay it in whole or in part, depending on the bank.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. I think the biggest problem we had was the interest, you know, amounts, you know, in 15 and to 20. And I was just looking, you know, locking ourselves in at 20. You do have this option after 10 or 11 years to, if you have the funds. And I mean, there'd be a lot of interest savings. Might not be as much, but there would be a lot.
But you don't know the next board that comes in. You don't know if they're going to want to pay it off, you know? It may, so, so you still may have the same debt.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the debt that we're going to incur, the stress that is going to put on our finance department.
I understand that. I understand.
Yeah, and just, this may help because I know we're, we're getting to the topics that had a lot of discussion last time. It's page nine has all of the proposals that we believe are relevant to assess. In other words, we've dropped Capital One and we've dropped Webster. And so the, the left-hand side of page nine is the 15-year term, options, JP Morgan, TD, Truist and the public bond market. Remember with the public bond market, we, that's where we get the ratings, we get the documents, we go at an underwriter and we, we can't lock that rate until mid-February. So we were kind of thinking, although it's a reasonably attractive option today, it's not meaningfully better than the banks and we've got extra period of time where rates can move. So we had kind of thought that that was not a viable option, but we included it in column H and L just to have it. So under the 15-year options, we've got JP Morgan, TD and Truist. What we're showing you on lines five through 17 is the revenues that would be needed to be pulled into the capital funding model under each of those scenarios. And again, it's not just to fund the jail debt service, it's to fund the jail debt service plus DSS and everything else that's in the capital plan. And we've got detailed schedules of each of those on the back if we want to look at that. So this is getting to affordability and the, um, the capacity within the debt model to facilitate these loans. And generally speaking, makes complete sense, the 15-year terms are going to require more dollars to be brought into the model than the 20-year. It's just a function that the payments are higher, although there's no doubt the interest expense is lower if all of these loans go to their final maturity. And so it's dollars that we've measured or pennies on the tax rate. It's not both. It's either-or. You know, however it's more meaningful to understand the impact. And we've just equated it to the number of pennies that would be required to maintain the, the financial balance in that model. So it's just, uh, it's, it's the additional revenues required, as we said at the top of the page, just measured two different ways.
So the tax impact would be 2.0, like on Truist, 2.09%?
2.09. And it would be, you would, you would need about a half a penny's worth of revenue in 28 and about one and a half pennies of revenue in 29. And those tax rates would have to stay in place. Alternatively, if you said, we don't want to raise the tax, we're going to find some other money, you know, you would need eight and a half million dollars. Not all at once. You go right above that, you would need that 8,482 and it would be spent between 2028 and 2035. So you have lots of revenues that you all dedicate to your capital plan and they all tie out to the budget. It's just that what's in there now isn't enough. It's closer to being adequate when you do this loan over 20 years than it is if you do this loan over 15 years. But it's still a shortfall. Uh, and I think that's just a question of, you know, you all are here today, there's likely to be a different board of some sort in 28 and 29 and just how you want to set all of this up for, for future boards.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
To give you an example here, uh, on the, uh, on the breakdown that we had on the 20-year financing, um, let me find that again.
On page eight.
Yep. Uh, on Truist, it is indicating 36 cents in fiscal year 31. I see the sheriff sitting in the back of the room there. You can help us with this. Very quickly, by doing some math, if in fact, we were to get that $10 increase in out-of-county inmates, if in fact, we got that $10, just a $10 increase, then that would amount and I, and use that revenue for debt service, then that would accommodate your 36 cents. So that $10 increase in out-of-county inmates is extremely important for us.
That, I have a micro statement. That's true. It will. But how much is his other cost going to go up? That may take that $10 instead of-
Uh, his other costs are going to go up, no doubt. But what I'm saying is, we, it's urgently needed to get some offsetting increase for us to keep prison. And if in fact, we had that $10 increase, they would account for the, the difference, that 36 cents, uh, in 31. It could accommodate. It'd help us a great deal. Thank you.
But that's hypothetical.
It is hypothetical because we don't have that $10 increase, but I've been pushing for it. But here's a good example of, of why we do need that. Facilities and personnel and all the call, I mean, they've gone up dramatically and we're going to have to recognize, we've got to have some additional revenues. Thank you.
So I was going to wrap up on slide 10, um, what I, what we believe maybe some of the key decision factors were. And on the left-hand side, a few observations that are specific to JP Morgan, like obviously the 15-year term only. We do have to accept it by January 1. If we needed to push to January 3rd, I think that'd be okay. We know on the draws, we can't, we won't know the interest rate on the draws until the draws occur. Presumably that will happen over a 24-month period. And we're floating with the market until February 7th on the amortizing loan rate. And they've given us a few different call options. No-call, wait till seven years, wait till 10 years. TD, 15 and 20, um, we could lock the rate as early as today. We do have the rating downgrade provision for the 20-year option. It is not applicable to their 15-year option. They've given us a, a seven-year no-call and a 10-year no-call. And then finally, Truist, um, they're locked. I, we said here, they are higher than both JP Morgan and TD. That's still true, although I think the gap has narrowed a little bit. And they have fairly standard terms and conditions. I think on the, on the right-hand side, the, the first couple of bullets are just restating some of the points we've made about affordability. Uh, one thing I mentioned at the bottom, an alternative option for consideration would be to move forward with the jail financing under a 20-year term. Again, suggesting that from an affordability perspective within the model. Not that it's the right decision and 15 years is wrong, but, but from the affordability model, the 20-year fits much more neatly, although it does have more interest expense because of the extra five years. And then this spring, when DSS and the community college projects come together, which again, are modeled at 20 years right now, um, depending on the project costs and the interest rates and the proposals, maybe consider doing that one over a 15-year term. There'll be less unknowns in the model at that time than there are today. Because I think the DSS projects are pretty big unknown in the current environment, bidding environment from what we've seen is, is, it's a tough environment bidding projects and we know on interest- And we know on interest rates, interest rates are volatile. We've seen that firsthand here just in a couple of days. So I just offered that as some perspective of balancing the desire to reduce the interest expense generally, and, and go in from 20 to 15 years is a way to do that. But maybe doing it with the next large project, which is about the same size as this project, allows you to do that with better information than what we have right now. So at any rate, we've, we've held the public hearing, there's a resolution for you all to consider, it's called a findings resolution, and we would like, as part of that, if you're able to, we would need direction on which proposal to go.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I understand the point of having to, you know, raise taxes at everything in, in the difference between the 15 and the 20. I hope I understand it. But a $7 million difference. And my thing is, even with raising the taxes or going to 20-year, it's gonna be tougher for a few months. And if we wait and do it on another project, this is the bigger project. So we saved more money on this project if we did a 15-year, than on the other projects it's, it's less money because of interest. And, you know, it's, it's, end of the day, that, that $7 million is a lot of money. And, and, and over, over time, over interest, over those 20 years, I mean, you know, if we just saved that $7 million, that makes a difference on that payment. That paid, that covered the payment for two, three years at the end. It's just, I, I just, I don't see the benefit outside. I mean, I understand, we're gonna have to raise taxes either way, to me with the 20 and doing, doing the DSS building and everything. But like I said, this is the bigger project. To do it here seems better to me, you know, just from looking at the numbers. I just, it just doesn't even seem, I mean, I, I just can't come up with a, a different scenario in my mind, and nothing's been said that made me feel anyway different. I mean, it's just, I mean, you're talking $7 million. And over time, I mean, we already know that boards are gonna come in, whoever's here, whatever, are gonna have to raise taxes over the years, because things are gonna continue to go up. That's just, it's not even, it's not rocket science. So, as I said, I mean, and, I don't know, I, I wish we would've, you know, kind of sort of gotten to this a lot earlier, did things differently. You know, we could've saved a lot of money on this project, but we're here now. And I think we have to be very, very considerate of that $7 million bottom line in 20 years.
Do I have any more comments? This is my conclusion, since we have the option if the next boards come in, because I feel like this is gonna put us in a strain, real strain for 15 years, by looking at the numbers. I really do. And talking with the finance officer and different ones and what we got going on, I just, I mean, if we can, if we have the option with choice to come in on the 11th year, if you have the funds, and start preparing for it. We have that option, but once we lock it in at 15 years, I mean, the payments is gonna put us really in a bind with everything else we got going on. I think the finance officer would agree with me on that, because I've talked with her on it, you know, because we've looked at it. But one thing about the 20-year loan, we do have an option here at the 11th year. We can do something if the new board wants to do it. But 15 years, you're locked in. And you're gonna save interest after the 11th or the 10th year, might not be as much as we want to save on the 15, but you will save interest. And I wish I knew what that interest amount was, it's probably gonna be about half of what it is.
The other consideration is these models hold constant any new projects for, for however many years. And we all know there's gonna be more projects. I mean, every year it seems like there's a project. I mean, you have the school system, you have other accounting facilities to consider. So it's, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you know, we would, we would love to be able to pay down all of our debt, but you got to be able to measure it out against, can you still eat at the end of the day? You know, can you still meet the, the basic requirements? And we know that projects are constantly coming up, we don't know what DSS and HELP will be. We've done a really good job, the county, the board has done a really good job of always kind of keeping that balance between what the banks will allow you to do versus affordability. And I, I would just hate to see us put in a situation where we're not comfortable with that anymore.
And new boards will come in and they will want to do their projects. And they will, like you said, you might not be able to do a new project, you know? And I like the option, you know, after 10 years, we can pay it off if we're right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dalton.
I, I think your alternative is correct, and that is, you have to look at not only the jail project, you have to look at the community college project, the DSS HELP, you've got to look at the total package. And, and Commissioner, you're correct, if you're looking only at the jail in regards to the, it is a viable option if you were only financing the jail, but you've got to look at all of those projects together. With that said, I, I really don't think we have much option, but really to go with the 20-year option on the jail and look at a 15-year option or financing less on DSS. This has always been a multi-project capital improvement plan. So I, I would think we would have to look at a, a 20-year option. Thank you.
And you're gonna save interest on the DSS to 15-year?
No, that's correct.
So it might, could offset the difference.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Foster.
Once again, I mean, we're going right into the DSS project, and if, um, those, even with the DSS and the community college, aren't some different funds coming in also for those buildings?
So all those funds have been accounted for in their model. The only funds that have not been accounted for are revenue loss, ARP funds. And that is, has kind of been set aside for any other potential cost overruns on these projects. As Ted mentioned, because there's so many unknowns right now, we don't know what that would be, because DSS and HELP still has, you know, has to be bid out. But every, all the other dollars, the $10 million y'all set aside for in the capital project fund, less the amount we spent on the Bryan property, the tax increase from '21, '22, the one cent increase from '22, '23, all of that has been factored into the models.
As well as on DSS, there's an interest expense reimbursement from the state.
That's what I was talking about.
And depreciation revenue offset. So we've got DSS, all the debt service in there, but then we have a credit, if you will, for part of the interest on the debt, because it's DSS, and depreciation dollars that is treated as a revenue coming into the model. So I think we've, we've got them both.
And unfortunately, we have to do that over, is it 40 years, I think?
Forty-year.
So we, we don't really get to match it up with, with the long-term.
Right.
And with the JP Morgan, the first option, you can't pay it back within, you have to go to long-term, right?
That you have to go to the long-term. If you, if you got 10 years in, it's a 15-year loan with them, if you got 10 years in and said, "We want out," they'd probably let you out, but you'd have to pay them all the interest you would owe them through the final.
Gotcha. And the second option, seven years, right?
For the first seven years, you can't do anything. After seven years, you can prepay or refund, whatever. Yes, sir.
Just pay it off or whatever. Same as Truist, correct?
For 15 years, it would be the first, the, Truist, for a 15-year loan, you can pay it off immediately with a 1% penalty for the first seven and a half years.
And after that?
No penalty.
Okay. So, and then the third option would be 10 years, you could pay it back after 10 years.
After, yeah, for, so you'll have the remaining five years.
So still the same, is that as Truist with 20, but you're just doing it in 10 and 15?
Right. Whereas, whereas Truist, yes, correct. Whereas Truist with the 15-year loan, you, you can prepay at any time, but there's a penalty for the first seven and a half, and there's a, no penalty for the second seven and a half. TD, 15-year, first seven years or first 10 years, no option.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because it was just seen as, as we were talking, like, there weren't, there wasn't an option for that. I mean, it's, at this point, I, I mean, have the board decide, it's fine, I've made my decision, and we can move on if everybody's ready to move on or whatever.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, first off, I wanted to, regardless if we go with a 15-year or a 20-year fix loan, Truist has seemed a little bit more streamlined as far as a fully approving the project, the loan, which that's a plus, opposed to JP Morgan asking for all this additional information. So I, I think that in regard to, if this board is gonna do a 15 or a 20-year, I think they may be the best candidate pertaining to those aspects of it.
I think so too. And keep in mind, you know, we can pay off early on the 20-year loan after 10 years. You save all that interest. And I think he said the first 10 years is 25 millions we pay off. After that, we have 25 million left, and that will not be any interest attached to that, if I'm correct.
Madam Chair, just have one question. I heard the current jail now that's over, that's, it just got built a few years ago, we financed that with?
No, that was cash, the misdemeanor facility, that was funded cash, with cash.
Okay. So the land and everything was bought cash?
I am, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, yes. It was bought along with it.
Yes, I think, because as a facility, it was around 10 million.
The land was purchased long before the jail was built.
Oh, that's reaching back, ain't it? Yes, I'm pretty sure.
It was originally purchased to be a DSS.
Right.
Sorry.
The county owned that property several years before.
They were gonna do something with Mason Department Store or something.
Yeah, we did, we did buy an additional, actually where the jail is sitting now, we actually did buy that. Because we added on what was there. But we did, we, we paid cash for that. And wish we could pay cash for this one, but we can't. Madam Chair, if, I, I don't want to get ahead of this, but I, I'm prepared to make a motion at, at time that we are complete with discussion.
Well, I just, a decision this big, do we need all the board members here, or do we move forward, and what's council's advice?
Well, here, here's the concern that I would have, and that is, I don't want to put us in a awkward position of developing all of the paperwork necessary to present this to the LGC, Allison. Because we've got to get on the calendar for February's meeting, and the cutoff of that is on February the 3rd for you to present.
January the 3rd.
I'm sorry, January.
Yes, sir.
January the 3rd is the cutoff for them to apply, to get on, on the agenda for February meeting.
30-day notice.
We got, we got that on the day then.
I, I really think we need to. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion, and I, I move that we go with a proposal from Truist on a 20-year financing, installment financing agreement for the financing of the Wayne, the new jail facility in Wayne County.
We have a motion on the floor. Raise your right hand on those who approve or you have to ask for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any discussion? I thought we'd already discussed it. Do we have any more discussion on this motion before we move forward?
Yes, ma'am. So just to reiterate, you thought that the 20-year term was the best term that we could possibly get?
I, I think it, from the bigger picture perspective of the capital plan itself, it's what I would consider to be more affordable. And with that in mind, yes, that was our recommendation and is. Although acknowledge that borrowing something over 20 years instead of 15 or 10, you incur more interest, no doubt. But from an affordability and the overall capital plan that we've, we work on and manage, it, I think it, it insulates the county from additional, significant additional funding needs in the future.
That was, that was a yes.
As a yes.
Thank you.
Any more discussion before?
I'm just.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to go with the 20-year loan with Truist. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for all the hard work, because that's a lot of work. I mean, look at all these schedules at home.
It's, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, and, and all the changes in rates, you know, makes it, the timeliness of it's important. But at this point, we'll, we'll let the, the bond attorneys know that that's the decision, and following the schedule, we would come back on February 7 for your second and final approval. And you'll have documents at that time that reflect all the specifics associated with the Truist loan and this particular project.
Now you gotta work up on the holidays.
Well, Vanessa, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on now to the consent agenda. We would need approval on the consent. Some moves?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Raise your right hand. You do. All opposed?
All righty, and then County Manager's report, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's. Hope everybody has a safe time away, spend it with family, and have some relaxation, and look forward to the new year. That's all I have, ma'am.
All right, we'll go to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Williams, let's start with you today.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to wish all of our District 2 constituents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want to also wish all of our employees here, the county, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I can't forget the city of Goldsboro as well, all of the individuals that live in the city of Goldsboro, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Foster.
I think at this board, we, we have to start doing a better job of being inclusive, going with information. Because, you know, I've been on this board two years, been through a lot of different struggles. It was a struggle to get here. It's been a struggle ever since I've been here, just to get things done, get things on the agenda, to, to get truthful answers, everything. And it's, it's, it's quite tiring. You know what I mean? It's tiring. You know, we get, we get offended for, you know, someone asks a question, or, or if it's the truth, or whatever it's, I mean, it's like, hey, look, we're trying, we're trying to discuss things and get things handled, we're trying to make a difference here. And things aren't gonna always be the same. We're not gonna always all just agree or, or whatever, but it's not gonna be the same. And, you know, I, I visit a lot of counties, I've been working on certain boards and stuff with a lot of different people in a lot of different counties, and I'm just watching how those cities and counties are just moving forward. And I'm, I'm worried about Wayne County, I'm worried about the city of Goldsboro and Fremont and Mont Olive also, that we're, we're, we're just a little too stagnant. And, and we're a little too stagnant in, in, in the decision-making process and some of the things that we're holding on to and the values. You know, we're arguing over conservative or liberal, or Republican or Democrat. I mean, I couldn't care less about any of that. It's about the people and what we're getting, what we need to get done. You know? I've had just struggled behind, struggled sometimes just being here. Sometimes I just, like, I'm not even going to the meeting. What's the point? And that's sad to say, but that's the truth, you know, um. From simple things, it's trying to get things on the agenda, you know. I mean, simple, why can't we discuss employees having Juneteenth as a holiday? Why not? It's a federal holiday. And, but we not discussing it here. Why aren't we discussing, uh, minorities and just everything in the workplace? Those are issues. Those are things that, you know, we, we need to do a better job of. You know, we want to be a, a county that represents everyone, that, that gives everyone an opportunity across the board. You know, we want to make sure all of our board members get the same fair treatment, the same level of information, everything. And I just don't feel like that's been happening, you know. And it's like, I sit here, I'm like, okay, how do they know all this stuff? But I don't know it. I get to the meeting and I, I, I wing it. I mean, I literally have to sit here and wing it because I don't have the information. And, and that's just, that's just not good if we say that we're working together. And for the most part, no one can sit here and say, I mean, probably seventy, seventy to ninety percent of the stuff, I voted with the board. But has the vote board did the same with some of the items that I've tried to get accomplished? You know, you know, I don't like this super majority. Um, I think that needs to be looked into. Uh, like I said, once again, I, I don't, I don't see that anywhere. I know that it can be done, but I don't see the minutes for it. I don't, so are we hiding something from the public? Are we hiding something from my members? All of those things need to be shown. We need to be transparent. You know, I, I went back and looked at minutes from, from, from twenty-twelve, from when Commissioner Daughtry and Commissioner Acock first got on the board. And it was, you know, we want, we want to include the, the, the citizens and, and everything, but we turn around and we vote for one meeting that they can only speak three minutes. But during that same meeting in twenty-twelve, you want them to speak for four minutes twice a month. Had an individual here today that couldn't even speak. Those are things we need to look at. What changed over that time? You know, I, I don't know when it changed. I, I haven't been here that long, but I just know that it changed. You know, Commissioner Daughtry stated in his, in his first, first meeting here, afternoon meetings. He wanted afternoon meetings. Think it's seventy percent of the counties do afternoon meetings? Sixty percent, no, no. Sixty percent do only evening. Thirty-four percent do day and, and, and evening. Only six percent only do, do day meetings, you know. So it's like, wow, you're like, that's something that, you know, we had an opportunity to, you know, make sure we had at least one meeting every, every, every evening. But that was voted down to do one every quarter. And then I think one of those, one or two of those didn't even happen. But these, these were statements that are in the, in the minutes. So I, I don't know what's changed. I don't know what's going on, but I want fairness across this board and not just for myself, for everyone. I want the information. I want it the same time. I don't want to be kept in the dark. I don't want any of those things. I'm pretty sure that's, that goes for everyone else. Thank you.
Commissioner Daughtry.
Well, I was gonna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, but I'm kind of let down after a conversation like that. But I do, I, um, Christmas is a great time of year. It reminds us all of the coming of our Lord and, uh, the great salvation that we all, uh, have. It's a time for family to get together. It's, uh, it brings memories. And I just wish everyone a very peaceful and harmonious Christmas. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Commissioner Horace.
Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Foster, you are not alone. And Madam Chair, one of the things at my state, there you are.
Here I am.
One of the statements I made, uh, when you were elected is that for transparency for the board. And I think you will bring that. And thank God we have you. And folks, have a Merry Christmas to you and your families. Enjoy the holidays.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, ma'am. First, I apologize for leaving the meeting, uh, but my girls come first. Uh, somebody, uh, hit and run Carolina while they're gay, but they're fine. Just, uh, I got my girls, uh, smart enough to get the license plate number, name on the side of the truck, and a picture of the driver. And he still didn't stop. So anyway, I had to go deal with that. Um, uh, do want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I want to thank Chip's, uh, idea and Kayla and Carol for going and getting the, um, uh, stuffed animals for the parade at, um, O'Berry. Uh, I think that was, wish they hadn't rained, uh, sun, but, uh, so they could've got out a little bit more. But they had some issues, uh, on their own. Like to wish everybody, uh, out there as well a Merry Christmas. And, uh, I thought some prayers with the Realein Brantley family, uh, last night, tragedy. So, um, this time of year is always a bad time, but bad time any time, but this time of year seems like it's even worse. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Acock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas also and, uh, our, uh, staff. Thank y'all for what you've done this past year. We've had some hurdles and we crossed them. Really, when you get right down to it, uh, our staff and, and our leadership, our county manager and his staff, Ginger, glad to have you on board. And as Commissioner Gurley said, uh, parade out of O'Berry. Certainly appreciate the commissioners that were able to attend. I know some had conflicts, but, uh, like he said, wish the weather had been better. But, uh, that, that parade is very important. Wish all of the parades with a ten are, but that one, it, it touches at your heartstrings. I think all the commissioners there could, could see that from the, and the appreciation of the staff out there. They, they were so appreciative of, of us being there and the other people that showed, showed up for the parade. And that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I get to write one back.
Okay, I guess it's time for me to speak. Commissioner Foster, statements that you've made is very disturbing. And I'd love to know more about how you feel about some of these things, what we can do better. I'm here anytime anybody wants to discuss anything with me about things like this, um, because we are one board. We have to work together, but we also got to communicate. And I appreciate your honesty, um, and hope we can move forward and maybe, uh, resolve some of the feelings that you're having about this. I don't know what it's gonna take to do it, but until we talk about it, we can't figure it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Me, uh, I do wish the staff a Merry Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Crumpler, Ginger, Carol, Mr. Parker, and our finance department, Ryan, and all the rest of the staff. Thank you for what y'all have done this year. It's been a whole lot to me and, um, any request I've made from each and every one of you, it's been done. And I thank you for that. This Saturday, we had the Veterans Day, Landed at Reese's at Pikeville. I think some of the rest of you probably went to other events of Landed at Reese's. But I'm telling you, when I left from there, I had goosebumps. I cannot tell you how appreciative I am of those people that are buried in our cemeteries, that have served. The reason we can speak and do the things that we do now is because of a lot of our veterans. And I just cannot say enough about their families because their families serve as well. And a lot of, uh, good things were spoken at that thing. And one of the most interesting things that was brought up there was the flag. Wayne emphasized this on, when the Star Spangled Banner was written.
Written.
When the British come in, that was holding up the flags was dead bodies. I never knew that. I never learnt that in history. When one fallen soldier would fall, another one would run and take his place. He would kill, and that was what was holding up the flag in America when the British come. I thought that was very interesting to, you know, preserve our freedom. But I, 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 I would not miss that event. I sent out, uh, invitations to other people that I knew that was buried there to make sure that they were buried, uh, were attending also. Also, uh, Commissioner Acock and I went to the Fremont Fire Department, uh, what they do for their community. And it's just been a busy, busy month. And I, like a lot of you, I'm ready to take Christmas and slow down a little bit. But again, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, uh, pray to our Savior that twenty-twenty-three is gonna be a better year for everybody. And that's all I have. Mr. Crumpler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I just got a text, something that I've been trying to get done for two years. Just got a text from Kendall Lee, the house on Mount Comer Church Road is gone. So maybe I will quit getting the phone calls about.
Merry Christmas.
That's your Christmas present.
I saw that it's been cleaned up.
He even rode me by there one day to look at it.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it beside my house.
I wouldn't either. Well, Merry Christmas. All right. Do we have anything else before the board, before we adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Horace.
Have a good Christmas.